I'd like to call to order the January 23rd, 2023 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland School District Two Board of Trustees. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
This is Nash.
I move to approve the January 2023, sorry, 23rd, 2024 Board, oh, sorry. I'm looking, my glasses are dirty. I move to approve the agenda for the January 23rd, 2024 Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Washington to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, if that is correct on the screen, Ms. Nash, it'll look good up there. The vote is five yes, two are not present. Mrs. Agostini, yes, Ms. Agostini is out of town and Dr. Scott will be here later in the evening. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding executive session?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Washington.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult ed program, employment recommendations and certified releases, contractual matter regarding board legal services, contractual matter regarding a petition for annexation, update regarding personnel matter, and update regarding a personnel matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? All right, is that correct on the screen, Mrs. Washington? The vote is five yes, one not present. The motion carries. We will now convene an executive session. May I have a motion to end executive session? Mrs. Nash.
I move that we ended executive session at 6:28.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion was made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington to end executive session. Is there any discussion? Oh, Mrs. Baden, okay. The vote is six yes, zero no. We have one Board member that's not present. The motion carries. There's one Board member not present this afternoon. That'd be Mrs. Agostini. She's out of town and we, excuse her. We will now move on to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Nikki Porter will introduce tonight's guest.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. I am excited to share with you all or to introduce to you all the Honors Chorus from Summit Parkway Middle School. The Honors Chorus is going to be performing Shine the Light under the direction of Ms. Lisa Wiley, who has been the chorus director for 19 years at Summit Parkway. The Honors Chorus is made up of a selection of sixth and eighth grade students and their names are, please forgive me if I mispronounce them, it's Addison Boyd, Serenity Burton, Kayden Flaherty, Cyan Johnson, Ansley Presley, Dayon Ashford, Chase Belton, Morgan Keith Suter, Isabella Martin, Christiana Murphy, Brayon Philpott, Ryland Sally, Hayden Shealy, Chase Thomas, and Justin Walton. Every year, a school-wide theme is decided upon, and that was Shine Your Light. Each teacher has the initial of their last name in lights on their desks, and on special occasions, they have them shining throughout the building. So as soon as Ms. Wiley heard the theme this year, she began searching for the perfect song, which was Shine the Light. It was a perfect match. She also chose this song to show unity with their school-wide goals for the year. It's important to know that they are purpose-driven so that their Eagles can be future-ready. Summit Parkway has an environment of learning, belonging, continuous improvement, and joy so that students can feel connected, engaged in classrooms, supported by the faculty and staff, and achieving daily. We encourage them to show Eagle pride, which stands for being prepared, being respectful, having integrity, being driven, and being engaged. Finally, at Summit Parkway, the students soar with pride, rising above their challenges and helping others to do the same. They glide through the sixth, fly through the seventh, and soar through the eighth, believing there are no boundaries, daring to be different, and destined to be great. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you our Honors Chorus from Summit Parkway Middle School.
(Music) Shine the light for all the world to see. Shine the light all across the land and sea. Everywhere you go, shine your light so men may know. Let it shine, let it shine, let it shine. Shine the light for all the world to see. Shine the light all across the land and sea. Everywhere you go, shine your light so men may know. Let it shine, let it shine, let it shine. This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. This little light of mine, all over the world, I'm gonna let it shine. Let it shine, let it shine, let it shine. This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. I'm gonna let it shine, while this little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. I'm gonna let it shine, while this little light of mine, all over the world, I'm gonna let it shine. Let it shine, let it shine, let it shine. Everywhere you go, I'm gonna let it shine. Everywhere you go, I'm gonna let it shine. Let it shine, let it shine, let it shine. Let it shine, let it shine, let it shine. Let it shine, let it shine.
Ms. Wiley, before you leave on out, will you do us a favor and lead us in the pledge?
Yes.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, where liberty and justice for all. Also, Ms. Porter, Ms. Freeman has to...
Just a little token of our appreciation to say thank you for all that you do for Richland School District Two. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for that. I always appreciate those that can perform because I can't sing, dance, or play a musical instrument, so I very appreciate it. We're gonna give, we're gonna give the guys just a second to move that, and then we'll All right, we will now move on to item 5.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Washington.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the January 23rd, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Washington, does that look correct on the screen? The vote is six yes, zero no. The motion carries. We now move on to voting on, we have no public participation tonight, so we will move on to voting on executive session items. May I please have a motion regarding student appeals?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash.
I move that we uphold the administration's recommendations for students one through four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? All right, Mrs. Nash, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct.
The vote is six yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding a student admission request into the district's adult education program?
Mr. Trapp?
Mrs. Porter.
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students numbers one through two.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Dr., oh, Dr. Scott, I'm sorry. All right, the motion was made by Mrs. Porter, seconded by Dr. Scott. All right, is that correct, Mrs. Porter?
It is.
The vote is six yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Washington.
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Mrs. Washington? Vote is six yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding, a motion on the contractual matter regarding a petition for annexation?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. McFadden.
I move for the approval of Pontiac to be annexed into the city of Columbia.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? All right, is that correct on the screen, Mrs. McFadden? The vote is six yes, zero no. The motion carries. We will now move to section eight, item 8.1. Board members, may I please have a, may I please have a motion regarding policy J F A B D, admission of homeless students?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash.
I move that we accept the revisions to policy J F A B D, admissions of homeless students.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Mrs. Nash?
That is correct.
The vote is six yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding policy J I A A A, educational opportunity for military students?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash.
I move that we accept the revisions to policy J I A A A, educational opportunity for military students.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Mrs. Nash?
That is correct.
Vote is six yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding policy A D C, tobacco-free school district?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash.
I move that we accept the revisions to policy A D C, tobacco-free school district.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? All right, is that correct on the screen, Mrs. Nash?
That is correct.
The vote is six yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding policy G B E D, tobacco-free workplace?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash.
I move that we accept the revisions to policy G B E D, tobacco-free workspace.
Is there a second?
Workplace. Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Mrs. Nash?
That is correct.
Vote is six yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding policy J I C G, tobacco use by students?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash.
I move that we accept the revisions to policy J I C G, tobacco use by stu...
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Mrs. Nash?
That is correct.
Vote is six yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding policy I K F, graduation requirements?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash.
I move that we accept the revisions to policy I K F, graduation requirement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Mrs. Nash?
That is correct.
The vote is six yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding policy K B E, relations with parent organizations?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash.
I move that we accept the revisions to policy K B E, relations with parent organizations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Nash, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct.
The vote is six yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding policy J L I G, sun safety?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash.
I move that we accept the revisions to policy J L I G, sun safety.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington.
Sorry about that. We're gonna, sorry, we are going to adopt policy J L I G, sun safety.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington to adopt policy J L I G, sun safety.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, it's unanimous, six yes, zero no. That motion carries. We will now move on to, yes, 8.9. May I please have a motion regarding policy G B E B E, Gavin's Law?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash.
I move that we adopt the revisions to policy G B E B E, Gavin's Law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? All right, is that correct on the screen, Mrs. Nash?
That is correct.
All right, all right, Board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I have a motion regarding policy J I C F G, Gavin's Law?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash.
I move that we adopt the revisions to policy J I C F G, Gavin's Law.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Nash... We have a motion by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? All right, Mrs. Nash, is that correct on the screen?
Yes.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is, the vote is six, yes, zero, no, the motion carries. We will now move to unfinished business, no action requested. The agenda item in this section is regarding the proposed revision of policy J I C A R, administrative rule student attire, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Dr. Marshall and Franklin to come up and discuss the proposed revisions to the policy of the board. It looks like we have Dr. Sabrina Suber, our executive director for secondary education, who led the work on this administrative rule. Dr. Suber.
Thank you. Chairman Trapp and the School Board of Trustees, in response to your request, we... Is this better? Chairman Trapp and the School Board of Trustees, in response to your request, we revisited policy J I C A dash R. To gather input, we engaged with key stakeholders, including the Student Advisory Council, the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Council, and the teacher firm. Several key themes engaged, and they emerged, with a primary focus on aligning the dress code with our tagline of purpose-driven, future-ready. The identified expectations include guidelines for pajamas, slippers, the length of shorts and skirts, dresses, shirts, and the prohibition of headgear inside the building. Additionally, there is a recognized need to revise the enforcement language by discontinuing the word distraction. And so, as you see what's posted, what we have on the board, anything that is underlined is new, and anything that has a strike through is something that we are saying that we are going to remove and replace. And so, the introduction of J I C A really speaks to the kids coming to school prepared to be academically engaged. Also, it deals with our, the student experience of being connected, engaged, supported, and able to achieve. And so, if we go down just a little bit further, we have taken a look at what students must wear, or what we're asking them to refrain from wearing. And so, as you can see, as in the previous policy, students must wear tops, shirts, sides, shirts with sides, bottoms, and footwear. What we are requesting is that we make the adjustment under some of the things that students must not, must not wear, to include holes larger than a school ID. They can wear activity pants, leggings, spandex, tights, a unitard, or any other opaque clothing. They can be worn as long as there is a shirt, a blouse, or a dress. And so, if you're thinking about the leggings, they're not saying that they don't, you know, we're not going to wear leggings or allow the kids to wear leggings. We just want them to have a top on that at least meets the top of the pants. We're asking that they not wear loungewear or pajamas, that they refrain from wearing house shoes and bedroom slippers. If you go down a little bit further, we're also requesting that they refrain from wearing, being able to reveal their undergarments. Except for, I'm sorry, except for the waistband. Sometimes the kids have been wearing their, their pants low enough where you can see the name brand, the name brand of their undergarment, and so, we're asking that no undergarments be shown. Now, we all recognize that our students have and schools have spirit weeks, and so, we're providing some leeway there that they can have, they can make, schools can make adjustments providing that it is a school-approved event, such as the spirit weeks. Next, with enforcement, we have actually re, we've rewritten that first paragraph, and for this one, we're asking that students, at the discretion of the principal or designated, they may be asked to briefly be removed from the classroom to change the clothes or cover if they are not in dress code, if they're not abiding by the dress code guidelines. And at this time, we are also asking that if it is a continued, a continued infraction, we're asking that they possibly receive some sort of intervention or consequence as outlined in the student code of conduct. And so, and finally, we are asking that we start to implement these new rules in the school year of 24, 25. So, not at this time, as parents have already purchased clothes, kids already have clothes, that we're asking as we move into the next school year, that we are able to revisit and implement those requested items. And at this time, if you have any questions, I'm free to take those questions.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you, Dr. Suber. Yes, Mrs. Nash?
I do have a question, where it says, the, about the activity pants and opaque clothing. If the pants are opaque, are we saying that the shirt doesn't have to be longer? Because there's no specification. So, if the shirt is at the waist, you're still wearing opaque pants?
Right, we're saying that they can wear the tights and the leggings. Before, it used to be a rule that they needed to cover the front and the back, and what we're saying now, that as long as there is no midsection showing, that they can wear the leggings, and the shirt must at least reach the top of the pants.
Right, but, but we're talking about opaque pants? Because that means you can kind of see through.
No.
Oh, oh, can't, you can't see through.
Yes.
Oh, okay, you know what, opaque stockings, it's coming back to me.
I just was kind of concerned. I was like, I haven't worn stockings in a long time. I just wanted to make sure.
All right, is there any, any other questions for Dr. Suber?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs., Dr. Scott.
Just a question and then a comment. Did we mention anything about the bonnet on the head? Because I would love to have that, you know.
And so, there was some discussion about bonnets. We did not list those specifically, but we said no headgear in the building. That's what we're requesting, we just did not list it out as one of the suggestions.
I would love for that to be listed, so we would not be challenged once we produce this new policy to parents. And also, if this policy is approved, I would like for us to stop updating parents as soon as possible, so they can plan accordingly.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Ms. Porter, do you have a question?
Yes, this goes back to the line that Ms. Nash was just talking about. That sentence that you said, where their shirt has to meet the top of the pants.
Yes.
I think we may need to include that at the end of the sentence. It kind of stops where it says worn as outer garments without shirt, blouse, or dress. But that detail might need to be added.
Say that one more time.
Is, things that they must not wear? Is activity pants, leggings, jegging, spandex, tights, unitard, or other opaque clothing worn as outer garments without a shirt, blouse, or dress? So, that's just saying that they can wear them, but they have to have a shirt, blouse, or dress, but it didn't state the part of...
Of the middress.
That they have to meet the top.
Yes.
And I think you can somewhat interpret that as well by that they can't wear the shirts that are showing, but still.
Right, I don't, I don't have a problem, I will add that. Any other suggestions?
I do have a question, and, just for clarification, under the students must wear, it mentions tops, has a definition of what tops are and where they're supposed to go. Then down below on the must not, you know, we've all, we've been mentioning about the leggings and things like that. I guess my question is, it seems like we wouldn't need to have that if they've got, because it says that they can wear those things, or they can't wear them without a shirt, but we're already requiring a shirt, so it...
That's the thing, that's what we were saying, to clarify the middress. Right.
Okay, so, so realistically, I guess what I'm saying is if we define what must be wore on the section that talks about tops, do we need the part in there about these other things, because they'll have to wear a top regardless? In other words, these things are, can be worn if we have a top, we're requiring to have a top, so it seems almost like it doesn't accomplish anything. And I could be wrong, maybe I'm looking at it that wrong way, but... I would have expected that to indicate that they would have to wear a, for example, a dress would have to cover a certain portion of their body other than meeting the top of the pants, but...
Right.
You know, and I'm, and I'm not suggesting we change all that, because I'm a guy and I know better than to get into women's fashion, but nonetheless, I think it's, I think it's a little, I don't think it's as clear as I would like to see, but we can talk about that.
Sure, I can make that adjustment.
Okay.
Sure. Are there any more questions?
Thank you for bringing this, because we have seen some house shoes in schools and, you know, that just shouldn't be, so thank you so much for that.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
There's no further questions, thank you, Dr. Suber.
Thank you.
All right, we will move to new business action requested, item 10.1. The agenda item in this section is regarding the legislative committee update. The report be given by Mrs. LaShawn McFadden, Chair of the Legislative Committee. Mrs. McFadden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, I would just like to say that we had our first meeting on January the 11th, and those that were in attendance were myself, Angela Nash, our board chair, our board vice chair, Mr. Ania Jamison, our committee vice chair, Lisa Ellis, our Richland Two teacher representative, Ms. Melissa McFadden, our parent representative, and Mr. Larry Smalls, our other parent representative. Like I said, we had our meeting on January the 11th, and we did update our calendar so that we're able to accommodate parents and those who work late. We will be having our next meeting on Tuesday, February the 20th at 5:30. All of our meetings will be updated on our website within the near future. And we've discussed, one of the propositions that we want to do is to send letters to our delegation, letting them know our stance. So, what we're doing is we're going through certain policies or, and bills that are currently on the floor, or legislation that's currently on the floor, to see where our stance is, and so that we can send them out to our delegation and say, this is Richland Two's stance. So, in the, in the process of doing that, we do have one letter drafted, and we're going to wait until next board meeting, so that our board members have the opportunity to review that and draft and add, or add to the draft and change it according to how they see fit, before we actually present the final draft for a vote on it. And one of those is actually going to be the H three two nine five competency-based education bill. What this bill seeks to do is to alleviate or help with that attendance concern for seat time that we had at the beginning of the year. A school that is competency-based means that a student can pass the class if they approve competent, which is now at this point, passing the class with a 60. So, if you have a 60 in that, in a particular class, and you miss 12 days, you're not required to make up those other two days that you missed for that class, with the exception of the E O C classes, which are Algebra One, Biology One, English Two, and U S History. This actually really only applies to high school. So, we did get one submitted last year for our virtual schools, so those who are in virtual schools are already able to take advantage of this opportunity, and we hope that in the future, that we will be able to submit that application and get it approved for all of our high schools, so that parents don't have to worry about their senior graduating with needing so many hours of seat time if they're competent in a, in a subject area. Other bills that we're discussing are H three four two two, which is PACE, or Providing Academic Choice Education. This legislation seeks to provide grants for students to attend homeschool and other independent alternative schools as a parent chooses. This bill is currently on the floor for discussion. I would like my board members to continue to have the conversation, to see where we stand, so that we can go and speak to the legislators about our stance and how we feel about it as far as our funding and other aspects of choice for our parents. Another bill that we're talking about and discussing is S seven three four. By the way, H is for House, S is for Senate. So, S seven three four, which is parental rights, it gives the parents the right to decide on how they, they bring up their children as far as education and childcare and disclosing information about their child. For instance, a school can't give information about their child and withhold it from the parent. They're obligated in some areas to disclose that information to the parent of that child, and that is currently on the floor now. So, I will be going to Washington, D.C. at the end of this week, and I'll be speaking with Representative Joe Wilson or his staff about our safety, our traffic safety proposal that we sent to S C S B A, and that is about our, being able to train our own, not even S R's, but security officers to direct traffic in front of our schools, so that buses and cars can come in and out of our schools and make that left-hand turn with a guard there like there has been in the past. Currently, they have to be class three officers, and you know, those are registered police officers with Richland County, and they cost us a lot of money, and we have 40 schools. So, what we want to do is go back to what we were doing before, before we found out that there was a law, and get our own staff trained at the new center for violence, targeted violence that they have in Lexington. Hopefully, we can get it there, but try to get them trained so that all of our schools will have someone out there directing traffic for our parents to get to work on time and to keep our students safe. So, that's what I'll be doing, that's one of the things I'll be talking to. I haven't got a word back at what time I'll be meeting with Mr. Wilson or his staffers. I'm also going to be meeting with Mr., or Senators Tim Scott about the parental rights. As you know, that he has dropped out of the presidential race, but he still has information about parental rights that he can use within our, our district, just to see where our board wants to go on that. So, one of the greatest things is that the NSBA, which is who I'm traveling to Washington with, they sent me a worksheet for, for us to complete about our S R funds. Our S R funds have a lot of programs that have offered, like our store program during the summer, and other programs in hiring staff. Those funds have gone away, this is the third year, those funds, those funds will be fading. And we had our great chief special education officers, Dr. Cadena Davis, to fill out this huge form for us. It is very detailed, it will be on the website for you guys to view, but that's what I'm going to take up, to speak with them about what we're going to do about funding for these programs. So, that's basically what we've been going over and talking about for our legislative committee. Again, our next meeting is going to be on February the 20th at 5:30.
Is there any questions or comments about the legislative committee report?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs., Dr. Scott?
Yes, I do have a few comments. First of all, I want to say thank you to Mrs. McFadden and her team for the hard work that they're putting in, but I do have some concerns with the legislative committee. I think they're doing a great job, however, I think part of what they're doing is committee-based, and it haven't been run past the board members to find out if these are some, okay, to find out if these are some of the policies that we're interested in. I truly believe that if you're going to represent Richland Two, then it should be, a conversation should have been had with the entire board to say, what are some of our interests? And then, we share that with the board chair, who's Ms. McFadden, and then she takes it back to her committee, and then they create a draft for us to review. Reviewing some of the minutes, I do have some concerns of some of the things that I saw on that, and that is not a representation of the board, and it's not representation of me, and I'll speak for myself. So, before we continue with meeting with legislators or minutes of the legislative committee, I would like, and I would ask my colleagues to reconsider this legislative committee until we actually have a conversation, a sincere conversation of what the interests are, and have that conversation also with our superintendent, to make sure those are some of the concerns that she has, as well as the concerns of the district as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Porter?
Yes, so, first, I want to make sure that you know that my comments are not meant to offend anyone or hurt anyone's feelings, or disregard the hard work that has been put in place, but I'd like to share my thoughts about our committees as a whole. It's been brought to my attention from a few constituents, and I agree that our committees have acted beyond the scope of what is outlined within our policy. Also, I believe that our committees should be doing the work of the board. As I review the update provided, I'm concerned about... about community members whom I value may be overstepping without intention to do any harm, but interfering with the work of Richland Two's staff. I'm not certain that the goals are that of the entire Board. Also, our committees should be doing the work of the Board. In addition to this, sending out information that states Richland Two's stance would imply that our stakeholders are surveyed and the proper data is collected. I would like annual goals to be voted on and approved by the Board to ensure that we are all on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Mr. Chair.
Was that Ms. McFadden? Ms. McFadden.
Yes, sir. So I respect the voice of my colleagues. However, I did take that into consideration. So the only ones that we are, that I'm going to be discussing are the ones that we voted on for the resolutions from SCSPA, which we did take a vote on that, and those were all found in our vote on November the 14th with the PACE and with the Safety and Security. However, I did go back and look, and I couldn't find the vote for our Safety and Security Traffic Control Proposal, but we did take one, and I would like for us to find that because it was a unanimous vote. And I did understand your sentiments because I know that, how you guys feel about me speaking on your behalf. So I did take real intent to make sure that I didn't pull anything that we hadn't already discussed and had a vote on. So the only thing that we did not talk about at length was S734, which is parental rights, but we did have a discussion on that about where we wanted to be and how we felt about that. It was kind of tweaked differently on the resolutions. But I did listen to you guys when you guys said that, that you had concerns about what I might say, so I made sure that I was only going to speak about those items that we did vote on.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
So I do have just a few things, again, just to echo what my colleagues have said. I absolutely am appreciative of the community being involved in this, and I think that it really gives us a blueprint. I've looked at other districts, and they have like a community engagement and advisory committee, so I feel like it gives us a blueprint of what an advisory committee could look like to be able to engage in these type of conversations. One of my questions to the committee is, have we talked with the administration regarding the workforce development actions? Just in looking at the bill, I've seen some things regarding what the State Department's going to be doing and what the Commission of Higher Education. I just want to make sure that we are aligning to what's already been done, even with financial literacy. Again, I know that there are some things that are already implemented at the school levels, and so just want to make sure that we have touch bases with the administration on some of those things. And then finally, when we talk about priorities for our district, we've heard our Superintendent, and we've all agreed that safety and security definitely is a priority, that teacher recruitment and retention is a priority, that we're looking at our finances and wanting to make sure that we are fiscally responsible. And so I wanted to know, are we targeting any bills that are related to recruitment, retention, teacher salaries? Are we advocating for our classified staff to get raises just like our bus drivers did? And then are we also reaching out to our communications team or Debbie Elmore to find out what's the best way that we can communicate with our legislators who are representing Richland Two? And then final comment, when we talk about tax credits, those are for private and homeschool, and so I don't see how that's a priority for us, although I understand that we had the resolutions that represented what the School Board Association is. When we talk about eligible schools, those are independent schools, including those religious in nature other than public schools. So I just want to make sure that we are not advocating for tax credits for private schools and make, saying that is a priority for Richland Two when it doesn't have anything to do with public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington, and I will address the, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. McFadden.
So for, for what you just said on the last statement for eligibility of schools, basically, I'm going, because we did vote that we wanted to have that option available. So most of what I'm doing is going to gather information from other entities, because we have the bills and we have what we would want, but I need to hear from other entities. Like, for instance, I know that I had tried to speak with one of our representatives about PACE and about the tax funds, and they are strong, opinionated that they don't want the funds to go to other schools, and I can understand that. So I'm willing to sit down with them, and that's why I'm going up there, and I've scheduled an appointment with them, to sit down with them to hear their full part on it, because I know how I feel about it. But I don't know a full story on how this representative feels about it and why they're so adamant about it. So when I go, I'm willing to go and listen to hear their side, so I can bring back what they're, what they're saying, and so that we, the committee and I can have a robust conversation, because I do have several different people, different types of people, I think, like that, on the committee, so that we can sit down and have a conversation and bring it back to the Board and really finalize what we really want and what we would like to say. We may not get all on one page or on one accord. And I understand what you said about workforce development. Yes, ma'am. What I'm trying to do right now is go through, because there's a lot of different positions, and see which would be the best position or the best person for us to connect with so that we can stay abreast of the information. I do know that administration may have information about that as well, but I want to do my due diligence and do what needs to be done for the Board and include administration with that. But I don't want to keep running to administration to do what I feel is necessary for me as a Board member and a committee member that I need to be, to be responsible for. They have a lot to do. So with that, and safety and security, you named a lot of things, teacher recruitment, fiscal responsibility, safety and security, raises, communications, and I know that in the beginning, I did have other Board members on this committee with me, but with the amount of bills that I had on here to look at, it was too many. And so what we had to do was, I had two people drop off, and I had to find five more people. So what we did was, we came together and said, okay, so what are some things, what are some things that are important to us right now? This right now is an ad hoc committee, and so we're just trying to build on it. But when it becomes a standing committee, I think that the dynamics that you're talking about and that you want to have can be done, and then we can start in the beginning. But we were at a crunch, so we were just trying to get started and get this process moving. So in June, when this hopefully becomes a standing committee, then I think that should be, that would be a good idea to set those goals and priorities first and then go from there.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I did, I just have.
Ms. Nash.
I do have a comment. I think that anytime you're doing something new, you're going to have kinks that we need to get out. We've had other committees on here, and I'll be honest, they were not nearly as scrutinized as this Legislative Committee has been. And again, there were people who were on this committee who could have given input at that time as well, but they decided that that was not a commitment that they could take on with other things. Totally understandable. I've also heard from constituents, and I'll be honest, I've heard a lot from them, and some of the things that they said, they're glad, we're just doing things. They're glad to see us trying new things. They're glad to see us involved. They're glad to see that we're committed. And so, you know, even with a Legislative Committee or without a Legislative Committee, our job as School Board members is to advocate for our constituents, and all of our constituents are the same. Not all of them look alike, not all of them believe alike, but that's the beauty of being on this Board. That's the beauty of our community, is that no one brain is the same as another. No one belief is the same as another. But we have to work through all those things, and I believe that this Board can do that, and do that in a way that is conducive to a great collaborative experience that this community will be able to see. So yes, I've heard from constituents, too, many of them, and they are very glad to see us improving.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. And if I may add, add one thing, if I, I hear that there, I believe what we have here is expectations, or perhaps some unmet expectations. I would encourage everyone in here, over the next two weeks before we have our next Agenda Planning Meeting, to reach out to me with any concerns you have, so that we can, if there is something we need to add to the next agenda to address these concerns, we can take care of that. That would be my suggestion at this point. Anybody have any other questions or comments?
I do have a comment.
Yes, Dr. Scott.
One, I want to say that I have been going to DC for many years in my 11 years on the Board, and it sounds great, but you don't meet with Tim Scott and Joe Wilson. Every once in a while, Jim Clyburn may surface. So I don't want anyone to have their hopes up thinking they're actually going to sit down with these people. It's not happening. What they do is they actually send a representative in their place, and they're sitting down with 50 to 60 people, so you may not even get an opportunity to share your views. And if this is really so important, as I've heard my colleagues say, then I want to hear from more constituents, because what I will say, over 28,000 students and 15 voices does not make my hair stand up. So when we say we've heard from constituents, 15 constituents does not move the Board, period. And if we really are concerned about making these relationships with constituents, as well as with legislators, invite them in and have them to talk with our Superintendent, so they can talk about what is pressing for Richland School District Two, not for a certain group, not for a certain race, but what is pressing in Richland School District Two, per information from the Superintendent and her cabinet reporting back to us. These are the concerns that we are having in Richland Two. Let me just give you an example. I welcome new ideas. I welcome people taking the initiative, and I think they need to, especially the younger people, because we're getting ready to transition off. So we do need young, bright, energetic, new minds. I'm for that. But at the same time, you cannot act on your own, because we are, that's the way we need to interact. Just as an example, I've served on the Legislative Committee many, many years ago. And just for an example, for the people who are listening, these are the things that we had. We had a Superintendent who came and said, you know, we have old buses, and if you know anything about buses, you know buses can be 15, 20 years. That's considered like a new bus, believe it or not. Yeah, believe it or not, that's considered a new bus. But we had some buses that were 30, 35 years old. So what the Superintendent said to the committee, listen, we need you guys to meet with legislators and tell them, we need new buses. We want to make sure that our students, you know, arrive to school safely and arrive home safely. Well, with that, we had an opportunity to go and meet with legislators, share with them what Richland Two need is. We need new buses. Once we had those conversations, in the next year or two, we had new buses. So in my mind, when I'm thinking about legislator and legislation, I'm thinking about a conversation with the Superintendent, saying, what are pressing needs for Richland School District Two that you would like us to be the voice to take on, not meeting with the committee and you just creating what you feel is best for your constituents. What's best for Richland Two? And if we want to do that, let's hear from the parents. Let's create a survey that goes out to parents and say, give us your top three concerns that you have that we can go and speak with parents, legislators on behalf of parents in Richland School District Two. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Porter.
I just wanted to reiterate that all the decisions made, all the conversations that are being had, all the directives for committee members to go out into the community and speak should still be the work of the Board. And therefore, I think I would like for our Board Chair, as our Board Chair, to make sure that that policy is being followed, and that if there's something that needs to, a vote needs to happen on anything, then that needs to happen. But it looks like there are decisions that are being made without a vote on behalf of the Board, and the Board did not vote on some of these discussions. I'm also extremely concerned by the minutes that don't relate to the needs of Richland Two. Some of these items, I think if you are passionate about it, you should work on that as an individual and on the side with the others that are also passionate about those items with you. But I don't think that it should be part of the discussion for these public dollars and of the work of the Board that the Board did not vote on. This is extremely concerning to me, being that we want to build relationships with our delegation, and, and some of the items here are not representative of our Board, and they don't see us working together. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next agenda item in this section is the 2024-2025 Budget Timeline. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board, we are in budget season. I know you're smiling. I can see them. Yes. This is, this is, this is a great time of the year, budget season. And so with that, I would like to introduce to you our Chief Financial Officer, Senior Chief Financial Officer, Mrs. Nancy Williams, to present the budget timeline.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Moore. You have before you, you have before you the preliminary budget timeline for fiscal year '25. We anticipate that there will be changes to this document as we go through, as the General Assembly goes throughout the budget cycle, and as we get dates from Richland County. But we will kick things off on January 29th, next Monday, with distributing a budget survey to Board members and employees, with a due date back to us of February the 9th. In that survey, we will be asking some open-ended questions related to priorities and some, some ideas on how to make any needed changes and the resources associated with those priorities, how to best, you know, implement those priorities. We will come back before you on February the 27th with the results of those surveys. And hopefully, by the 27th of February, we will have some idea of what House Ways and Means has put in their budget for K-12 education. I believe they meet for full committee deliberations the week of February 20th, so hopefully, we will have some idea, and we'll be able to kind of have better conversations around the budget. Also, on February 1st, we will release the budget forms to the departments with a due date back to Business Services of February, I mean, March the 1st. We will take March 2nd through the 31st to go through those requests and priorities, and then come back before you to have a public, at a Board meeting for the Public Information Session, and then throughout the first part of April, to meet with some various stakeholders. And so we're hoping by April 16th, we can have a work session, a budget work session. By that timeframe, we also hope to have received from Revenue and Fiscal Affairs the millage rate cap. So if we have to, if we need to start the conversations of a possible tax increase, we'll know what that cap is that we can exceed related to that. And then, so we'll be back before you on May 21st, May 7th for first reading, and then May 21st for the second and final reading. And then we leave the June 11th date out there, if we have to come back if there are any changes from the General Assembly. Again, we know all of these dates are going to change. We'll keep you guys abreast as we go throughout this process. Mr. Chair, I'm available if there are any questions.
Board, I'd like to also let you know that Mrs. Williams has already begun her conversations with our county commissioners. They do have a new budget director that was just hired, and so we are currently working with the county on our budget timeline, as well as making sure that we're in compliance with their timeline.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Is, Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I do. First, a question before I make a comment. I noticed on March 26th is the public input session. Are we going to have two of those or just one? Because I only see one up there. Will we go back and add? Because normally, we have like two.
Normally, we have two.
Yes. So will we go back and add that?
We can. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We will.
I guess they don't want to hear from me. I don't know. With that, I am pleading with faculty and staff, please come out. Don't be afraid. We work for you. I work for you. Every Board member up here worked for you. Believe that. Trust me, we work for you guys. So please come out on March 26th. See, I think you're doing that. You don't want me. You don't want me. Please come out on March the 26th and share your input because this is a time that we're discussing the budget. I don't want to receive emails, as much as I love hearing from you guys, after the fact saying, I wish you had been an advocate for more money for TAs or more money for bus drivers or more money for our support staff. Come out. Let us hear from you. It makes a difference when we can see you and we hear from you. I'm expecting to see this room filled with educators because I'm an educator as well. So I want to see you guys come here and be an advocate for yourself. March 26th, I want to see you guys. TAs, teachers, bus drivers, faculty, staff members, come out. And if you don't want to say anything, that's okay. Your presence here is important. Thank you. It's just, I don't.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Any other questions, board members?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, Ms. Porter, okay.
My question would be, do we have plans on how we can advertise to ensure that those who work in Richland Two are aware that this is the topic that's taking place at the board meeting and seeking their input to assist with that request from Dr. Scott?
Yes, we, we are required by law to make public notice, old-fashioned way, but we will use Parents Square to put the word out, to let parents know. And, and I will always be happy to do one of my wonderful videos to let people know that we need to come out. They get such great reviews and I'm always excited to do it. I do want to also point out to board members, Mr. Chairman, if I can, that in Ms. McFadden's update, she gave a copy to the board around the, it's titled, "The 2024 Advocacy Institute Homework Worksheet." And it really deals with all of our ESER dollars that we have been used, that we have been spending, of which ends this year. So as we are talking about budget and as we're looking at the fiscal cliff of what's going to happen when ESER dollars go away, that is something that I would encourage the board and the public to look at because it does give you a lot of details around needs that the district has, as well as, most importantly, the needs of our students. Because we are out of the COVID pandemic, but the challenges that our students are dealing with are still there. And we will need resources to provide the level of service that our students still need to be successful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Williams. The next, the next agenda item in this section is a capital improvement update. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Will Anderson, our Chief Operations Officer, to give the board their quarterly update on capital improvement.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Tony's good? I'm just messing with you. Tony's the best, y'all know that, so. But thank you for being here. I also want to make sure, introduced Mr. Kelly Hill, who's our Director of Maintenance. Kelly's back here in the back. He's, he's here today at night on a roof somewhere, so thank you, Kelly. And, you know, I think y'all have met John Clayton before, our Director of New Construction. So they are the men who, who do a fantastic job with the men and women they work with and so very, very appreciative of being here. Yes, Dr. Moore.
Mr. Chair, can I just take a point of privilege? We want to thank Mr. Kelly for his service. He is a retired Army NCO, HUA. So thank you for your service.
All those Army people. And we do thank Kelly every day. But anyway, I'll get to the point here. So we're here to give you our, our quarterly update. And then there were some questions last meeting we hope we can answer. Today's overview report is a bigger overview of the information that was shared in your board documents. And so I'll go as quickly as possible, but be, quickly as efficient, as thorough as possible, but any questions, myself and the team's here to answer those questions. Turn it on. All right. So quickly, talk about an update of where we are with our current projects, give you an update on some financing and some funding and inflation, and then our yearly capital improvement and maintenance update. You can see all the projects we have completed since, really, 2019. It was November of 18 when the bond was passed. And so thanks to John and his team, we have completed a lot of projects. We currently have six projects that are under construction right now. They are in the midst of everything from getting finished up to really a site work. So a lot, a lot going on right now under construction. We currently have these projects under design. They are anywhere from spring to summer 2024 construction to maybe fall, just depending on different, different permitting and other things we have to accomplish. But you can see those schools there that are under design. As well, I keep the 99% completion on the camera conversion projects because as we do new construction or renovations, we add those cameras to those renovations. So we are still completing those access controls. Our team was out the last two days getting those new schools up for those, our buses, and then safety and security projects have been complete. So switching gears to our financing and what's, what's been going on, as we all know, COVID and the impacts of COVID have been seen across the spectrum from all ends. And one of the hardest-hit industries was the construction industry. This first chart is just the materials that, that are used in construction. This is from the Euro, US Bureau of Labor Statistics from the Federal Reserve Bank of St. Louis. You can see from 2009 to 2020, we had a pretty stable, normal inflation, I guess is the best way to see. You can kind of see some years, either we had a decrease in inflation on materials. But you can see the drastic increase of what happened 2020, 2021 and what happened then. And really, the pricing has stayed high. And so while the, there's been stabilization, as you can see, and this is through, I'm sorry, should have said through 2009 through, through December of 2023, you can see that we've had some stabilization, but the, from where we were in 2020 to today is drastically different. The next chart is from non-residential construction. These are the price for building, basically, schools fit in this category, but commercial and other buildings. Again, very normal, I should say, inflation rate. And then you can see the spike that occurred in 2021. Again, we've leveled, thankfully, but that price index is a lot higher. Again, 40 to 50% inflation during those two years, a lot higher in the construction industry. And then lastly, just overall construction cost, putting all these different factors together when you include the labor market as well. And you can see, again, another reason. Reason I just share all those is to show that over the years leading up to our bond referendum, it helped us to, help us determine what our inflation rate would be. This helped us guide our, our decisions with, with the company that produced these reports or, I'm sorry, produced our estimates on our projects and then where we were and where we are today. So kudos to our finance department who has helped us and John and his team try our very best to get these projects done in budget on time. So I know this is hard to see and I've got the more detailed information, but I'm trying to put everything on, on, on the same page. This is the completed projects, the projects we have completed and we've basically cleared them out. You'll see on some, on another slide that it says still in construction because we haven't finished the punch list, for example, and some of the expenditures. But you can see our original budget, our revised budget, and then where our expenditures came in. So we did do some revisions to our budgets, but you, but you can see that our expenditures really matched our original budget, a little bit off, but for the most part, matched those. These projects under construction, and let me go back one second real quick, all of these projects are CM at risk, which means the construction manager at risk. The construction manager and the designer, architect are hired basically at the same time. So throughout the process, the construction manager is helping us to, helping us with our, with our budgets. On the time it's to start signing contracts, official contracts, we, we do a guaranteed maximum price, meaning that on that date, the contractor is stuck to that price unless we make changes, scope changes, but that's their price they have to meet regardless of what happens throughout the process. So in these projects, we, we started or signed the contracts in 2019, 2020, before the inflation hit, they were stuck to that price. And these projects under construction, they hit when the inflation was at its peak. And so that was a big impact to these budgets. Our team is continually trying to work on ways to save money. You can see a lot of these purchase orders that are open, a lot of these were getting funding back. I was just informed this week, for example, that I believe, I think Bookman's on there. We, it's still a purchase order, I'm still, it's still in punch list, but we're going to be getting back about $150,000 from that one, for example. So we continue to hopefully get money back from that guaranteed maximum price on these contracts. And then these are the ones under design, original budget, revised budget. The revised budget is, is the 40% inflation rate that we have for the revision. We're still trying to stay within our original budget, but in order to, to, to do what was in our, our proposal or in our bond is, is based on that revised budget. And then these are the projects that currently have not started. We only have, as you can see, just a handful more to go, but you can see those cost on those. And so I mentioned how we've come in. So the project total cost that we anticipate with cost savings, closing out open purchase orders, et cetera, is, at today is $534 million. Our projected revenue from Ms. Williams and her team and our financial advisors is $526 million. And that's the 7 million. I think I may have misspoke because it went top of my head last week was maybe, I think I said eight to 13. But as of today, our revenue needed to finish projects is $7.7 million. I know we hope to come with you in a plan for finance, for funding those in the near future, very near future of how we, our proposal. And I know Ms. Williams mentioned some of that last week, but we're still working through what that would look like. So that is our plan. That is what we currently are today and we continue to work hard on, on, on solutions for finishing those projects and the funding. So switching gears again to now move into the, some other conversations we've had as we have to continue maintaining our facilities. I bring this chart up because this is, I thought it was a really good chart from APA, which is the Association of, I forgot the analogy, I'm sorry. But it's basically the people who are responsible for maintaining facilities for college and element, and K-12 facilities. And it shows that first-time cost, but really every year, what it costs to properly maintain a facility. You can kind of see, you've got your annual maintenance and your fifth or sixth years, that periodic renovation, when we talk about reflooring and repainting. And you can see those years going up and then you start getting to those system failures if you're not properly maintaining your roofs at the 20 years, your, your HVAC systems, your mechanical systems. So in essence, if you stack year two through 25 on top, you can see how much more it costs to maintain a facility than that one-time cost. And so that's kind of why we try to stay on top of that as much as, we want to get it right the first time, but we also want to make sure we're properly maintaining so we can get the life extended further and we're not having to get to that point where increasing risk of system failure, which means we disrupt teaching and learning and all that good stuff. So it's a, it's a balance and act that Kelly and John and I will work together to make sure this works. Again, this is, don't, you're not intended to read this. I'm just putting it on the screen to show that it's, is our current plan based on our needs and, and then based on what we anticipated, our facilities, what we'll need for all the different areas. We've consolidated them, mechanical systems, furniture, painting, flooring, playground, you see them there. And then IT has its own separate tab that they have. I've just, I've just kind of nailed it down with main, with our team and then Tommy has, and Tommy and Charles have their tab as well. Just some of the things for this fiscal year that is on our list and then that we're working on now or we are anticipating, you know, more funding to do these, you can see all those there that we have on our list and those things that we continue to try to maintain. Just in final notes, as I mentioned, inflation's settled, it's very higher. We still have this random issues. It's, it's weird what products are hard to get and what are not. Labor has tightened up. We have spoken with some construction managed companies in the last two weeks that are talking about labor and the labor's getting tighter now. And so that's, that's concerning. We're walk, we're watching that, but that's getting concerning. As I mentioned in the previous slide, our previous presentations, we've had a few projects delay due to some issues, but nothing major. We've still been able to have our projects complete and we're happy about that. And with that, a lot of information, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Porter.
My question is for the project in regards to the, the door handles, the automatic locks?
Like the access controls or?
Like when you go into a school building and you go into one room and you walk out, it'll automatically lock. But then there are some doors where you open, it's all, it's already unlocked and so someone has to get their key out to lock it. I believe there was a project that was in place where all of those door handles were being replaced, but I, as I take visits and things like that, I've noticed it's still a bit inconsistent where some schools have started, some haven't finished or?
Majority of our, of our schools have. We, the last one we did, Kelly, was Ridgeview, I believe. We replaced all there, but 90, if, if not, it's just a, it's a one-off. And so we're just still working with those schools. But majority of our schools, we have on the same locking system, but the last one that we did was we completely redid Ridgeview's locks. But I'll, Kelly and I will double check. I'm pretty sure we, we've upped the speed on that. We'll double check that.
The two specific area, I was looking at some elementary schools and some middle schools where I was able to open the door and, without a key.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll double check facility, you know, also, we gotta, we have to always continue to up those, those policies and procedures to make sure those doors are, they're following those. And our safety monitors do go around daily. I actually took a picture, I was with John and Kelly and took a picture of one of our safety monitors doing the exterior of checking the doors, but, but I will make sure we stay on top of that. But I'll, I'll get a answer to your question about which schools we still have. If we haven't completed them, what we have left to do. I thought we did, but we'll double check that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Ms. Washington.
So you mentioned the 7.7 million.
Yes, ma'am.
So just to help me understand, first, let me say, last week, thank you for answering the best way that you could on the fly.
Yes, ma'am.
I really do appreciate it. It wasn't anything against you, it's just when questions start coming, you kind of want to throw ants, throw some questions out there. But you mentioned the 7.7 mil, okay. So is this outside, so this is basically saying, all of those project totals that are done, that's all the bond projects that are done? Or we, this is just capital?
This is, this is just bond referendum.
Okay.
Not capital.
All right. So what, so now we're at a place where we're going to need an additional $7.7 million.
To complete everything we said we were going to complete. Now, there's ways we could handle that. We could do different ways and that's what we're going to come back, but, I mean, you can see we haven't started any of these projects, for example, on your screen. And you can see those. So again, our recommendation at this point is try our very best to finish those if possible. But again, we'll come back with a recommendation with Ms. Williams and, and Dr. Moore on, on a funding proposal and then we'll bring it to the board for approval for that.
Okay. And then every project that's listed up here, these are all the bond projects, the completed projects, under construction, under design, projects not started.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it for me. Thank you.
If I may ask one question, just to satisfy my curiosity. I, I know the material that I purchased, some of it has doubled in price. Obviously, some of these figures have not doubled in price. I'm just curious, we have, I'm assuming most of our work is done by contract. These individuals may have agreed to a price with us before all this stuff started to get so expensive. Do we, are they kind of stuck doing the work? Or do they have a way to recoup with the rising prices of material? Is there a way that they can get extra money from us? And again, I'm just curious, it's not a important question.
Unfortunately, if we've already signed a contract, they're, they're kind of stuck now. So yes, sir. We, we actually had a few contractors that we worked with our attorneys on some language they would have, they wanted to put in on some escalation clauses, but we did, we did not approve any of those escalation clauses. John, am I missing anything?
That's correct.
Okay. So unfortunately, yes, sir, I mean.
No, as a contractor, that, that is the risk you take on a long, a long period of time like that.
Yes, sir. That is the risk of spots, construction manager at risk because you're taking that risk. And so, yes, sir.
Well, it is unfortunate for them, not bad for us, it sounds like, but that's, anyway.
Yeah, it could be the opposite.
But at the same time, we won't, we won't, right, well, we want our, we want our, we want to make money because if not, there won't be a business and we can't have them do things in the future.
I mean, if it went the other way.
Yeah.
Then, and we did a $20 million project and it went, the market crashed, they're not going to give us $10 million back, so.
That is correct. Well, thank you. That's all I had. Anybody else have any other? Anybody else have any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So I know that the Performing Arts Center is a part of the bond, and so I just have a couple of questions. But I'm going to email these questions to the superintendent regarding the vision of this building. How much is it going to cost to run this facility? What do we plan on doing in terms of staffing this building? That's something that I know that the board had in the budget last year. And so I have several questions. I just want to make sure that we are updating our our constituents regarding and updating the board, as a matter of fact, regarding just where are we going with this vision and I mean, this building, what is our vision and making sure that we're going to do right by with the money that we're spending on this project. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Just real quickly, we'll definitely respond to that. Dr. Moore and Dr. Franklin and I had an hour long conversation Friday, and we got follow up this week. So we are tracking, but we'll definitely hear as soon as we have more concrete recommendations, Dr. Moore, we'll be sharing those with you. Good?
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Yep. All right, next item on our agenda is section 11, 11.1, the agenda for our February 13th board meeting. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our next meeting is scheduled for February 13th, the day before Valentine's Day. Gentlemen, the day before Valentine's Day. I'm helping you. We will have our call to order at 5:30 with followed by the approval of the agenda, and then we will recess for our executive session. During executive session, we'll look at student appeals, if we have any student admissions request into the direct district's adult education program, breaches of contract, personnel matter regarding employment contract, employment recommendation, and certified releases. We will release to public session at 6:30 PM or around that time, followed by the inspirational moment, pledge of allegiance. Next, we'll move to our consent agenda where we will approve the consent agenda minutes from the previous meeting and classified employment releases and in district transfers. We will then have our public participation, followed by voting on executive session items, which will include student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, and any as needed items discussed in executive session. We'll move then to section eight, which is unfinished business, no action requested. We will bring an update to the board around the longevity bonus that the board approved. Next, we'll have new business, no action requested, and we will talk about employment contracts, followed by reviewing the agenda for the next meeting, which will be on February the 28th of 2024. If needed, we will have a second public participation, a second executive session, as well as a second voting on executive session items. We will conclude with board and superintendent comments and then adjourn.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the February 13th, 2024 agenda or to a future agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Now, Dr. Scott.
I would love to see policy BBA, and that policy is board powers and duties. In particular, I want us to revise the session that says visits to schools. So I'd love to see that on the February 13th agenda. Thank you.
Dr. Scott, would you like to make a motion to add add that to the agenda?
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to add policy BBA, board powers and duties, to the February 13th, 2024 agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Nash to add policy BBA to the next agenda. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Chair, the reason why I would like to add this to the agenda, and not only speaking for myself, as a former educator and someone who truly loves to visit schools and to be in schools, I think we need to revisit that of basically asking for permission or making arrangements with principals and the superintendent to visit. One thing I can say that when I'm out and about, I never know when or I have the time to even stop by, and I'm not going to make a schedule to go visit schools because we have wonderful schools in our school district. I know they're always doing what's right. So I don't feel like we need to make a arrangement of 24 hours, one hour, two hours, or whatever it is. If I'm close by a school and I have some free time, I want to be able to go in that school, spend about 10 to 15 minutes, walk around, let students see me, let parents see me, let faculty and staff see me, because I know faculty and staff enjoy seeing board members, and I know even many of our principals enjoy that. So I don't want this policy to hinder board members from having the opportunity to build those relationships with parents, students, parents, and the faculty and staff. And we shouldn't be limited to having to make appointments to go visit schools. So I would love us to go and revisit that, and I do have the language I would like to use, but I can get back to that because I want to inform parents that we are paying attention to what your needs and concerns are. And then I want to be able to tell you when parents call me and they have something critical to say, or even just to community members, I can say, I was just at that school, or that's a great school, and I can give feedback of things that's going on. So I don't want permission or to have to make arrangements to visit schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. And if I may add, I am I am in favor of reviewing this policy, and and I would like to see some language change. Because in my opinion, the policy, it really needs some language that more clearly defines exactly what's expected of everyone involved in this. So I think we should definitely take a look at it. I've always thought it was far too vague in its language. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, Dr. Scott, does that look good on the board up there?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, board members, please vote. Vote is six yes, zero no, the motion carries. Is there any other revisions or additions that anyone would like to see made to the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I'd like to make a motion to add superintendent goals and expectations to our next executive session on February the 13th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? All right, Mrs. Washington, does that look correct?
Can you add executive session?
Ms. Washington, does that look appropriate? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, zero no, the motion carries. Is there any other revisions or additions anybody would like to see?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I don't have a revision or addition, but I do have a request.
All right.
Okay, so I would like a request to find the vote that was taken on traffic safety on November the 11th, 2023 is not on the board docs anymore.
All right, I will. What's the date on that? What was the date again?
November the 14th.
November 14th. All right. Any other concerns about the agenda? All right, well, we are going to move to section 13. Section 12, we don't have any further public participation. Section 13, we are going to reconvene an executive session. May I have a motion to recess and really recess public session and reconvene an executive session?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I make a motion to recess, that the public session will be recessed, and the board will reconvene an executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? All right, board members, please vote. Vote is six yes, zero no, the motion passes. We will the board will now reconvene an executive session. May I have a motion to end executive session?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I'd like to make a motion to end executive session at 9:40.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Ms. Porter?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Porter, to end executive session at 9:40. Is there any questions or any comments?
Is it questions and comments about ending?
Yeah, yeah. No, for you, for executive session.
For ending executive session or just for discussion?
No, just ending executive session.
Oh, okay.
All right, it's. All right, we need to vote on that. Could we get? Do we want to hand vote that? Everybody just ready to end the executive session, right hand? All right, thank you, everyone. Know that we we can, I don't know that we do that under a motion tonight. I mean, I don't know if that's appropriate with FOIA.
We have our attorney here. Can you let us know if we can make a motion for a special call board meeting for next week? Is that a violation of FOIA? If you don't mind, if you can come to the mic.
Yes, I think as far as a special call meeting, there are. Does that? Yes, so under FOIA, there are notice provisions for a special call meeting. I want to say you have to give 24 hours notice. Now, far as your policy, your specific policy on how to get that that called, we'd have to refer to that and see the specific procedures for that.
For next week, you still follow up on the FOIA? Because we're not trying to do that within 24 hours. I know if we have.
You have to give notice to the of the meeting for 24 hours.
We would have time to notice it. Is there?
Yes, we have time to notice that. I'm asking for a special call board meeting for next week, so that's plenty of time.
You should make that most motion tonight if it's not only.
And again, I'd have to refer to to the actual policies on how you would, you know, your agenda on how to get the special call board meeting. I don't think it would necessarily be.
And while we are giving our comments, I would love to have feedback if you don't mind taking a minute to look at that policy and letting us know while we make our comments, please. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Scott, I think under the circumstances, I I mean, I can think of no reason we couldn't make the motion. I mean, it's it's. I mean, we would have time to notice the meeting.
Right.
If we chose a date, it may not work for everybody, but nonetheless, you can you can make the motion. And if it's seconded, we could vote on it.
Well, I guess my motion would be to, and let's talk through this before, that you send something out to see if people are available next week for a special call board meeting.
Would you like to just make a motion to for a board special board meeting next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to make a motion for a special call board meeting for next one day next week, and we will send some dates out for a personnel matter.
All right, is there a second?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Porter.
My question is, if it's not an agenda item, why would we even have to make a motion? Can can you just not call one if the board members?
I certainly could. Yeah, there's there's nothing keeping that from happening.
Okay, so if we send you an email, a vote doesn't have to be taken to have a meeting is for an agenda item. Am I right or? Okay.
If we were going to, well, this isn't an agenda item. This is a.
That's my point.
Right. A mo well, hold on. A motion has been made. Does anyone want to second the motion?
I can rescind the motion now that you're clear that you can just call a special call board meeting for next week.
I can. That's true, I can.
Mr. Chair.
If you're going to rescind the motion, we'll.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. McFadden.
As you all know, I'll be going out of town. I'll be going to Washington, and we'll be back I won't be back until Thursday. So if we could postpone that until I get back on Thursday or Friday, that would be good.
All right, we what we'll need to do is we'll need to get our.
Yeah, we'll just hold off, and then we'll come back to take a look at that.
We'll we'll have to explore that later.
Okay, with that said, let me just go to our comments because I know it's a late night, so I do apologize to all of you. Want to say just a reminder to our teachers, faculty, and staff that on March the 26th, we will have our public input session. I am encouraging all of you, especially those of you who love to send emails, which we welcome, about how we're spending money and how money should be allocated, to please come to the meeting on March 26th, the public input session. to please come to the meeting on March 26th, the public input session, and just share with us some of your thoughts and ideas. Just remember, that doesn't mean that that's how the money is going to be spent, but at least we know the areas of your interest. Also, want to say to the NAACP, I noticed that some of you guys were here this evening, so I want to say thank you for coming to the meeting, and I noticed that our, part of our cabinet has left. But I want to say congratulations to Dr. Sean Suber. I'm not sure if you guys were made aware, but he is one of the five finalists for FAFSA County School District Superintendent. So I am so excited for him, happy for him, would hate to see him leave, but would love for him to get that promotion because he's so deserving and such a servant and leader. So again, congratulations to Dr. Sean Suber. And everyone, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Mrs. McFadden.
It's been a long evening. Thank you, guys, for hanging around. Thank you to the chief staff, Dr. Moore, Ms. Tineira Washington, our executive assistant, and Ms. Georgia Council because they hosted a dinner for us tonight. So thank you, guys, so much for, for having that dinner for us. We appreciate you.
Mrs. Washington.
I just want to say, way to go, Richland 2. We celebrated 100 days of school on yesterday. It was so fun to see all of the kids wearing their little hats and dressing up as elderly people on yesterday. So, um, we're, we're almost there, y'all. And then want to give a special shout out to all of the teachers and principals who presented on behalf of Richland 2 at the South Carolina Alliance of Black School Educators Scapse, sharing all of the wonderful things that are happening in Richland 2. Thank you, everybody, for all of your hard work, and have a great evening.
Uh, thank you. Mrs. Nash.
Okay, so first, I want to say thank you to everyone who just made this a really good and special School Board Appreciation Month for all the gifts, for all the things that you all did, for all the hard work, for the dinner this evening. It was really, really wonderful, so thank you all for that. Second, I want to say thank you to the Safety and Security Committee and Tatiana James, who on yesterday came up with some amazing, presented yesterday. She did, she was really well spoken. She, and she's at Ridgeview, right? She's at Ridgeview. She came up with the idea for the student forum as a part of our, being one of our student representatives, and she did an incredible job of presenting. She also used Robert's Rules of Order, and she, um, we could learn a thing or two from, from them because they did a wonderful job. Also, you know, now I'm gonna get serious here for a minute, and I don't typically use my comments for things, but I am today. Tonight, and I've heard it several times, where there are things that are said as if though every one of us doesn't represent constituents here. We all do. We all do. But I think there is a thing where, as a board, understanding that, that there are different people that we all represent. Otherwise, the vote doesn't count. So whether it's 15 people or 15,000 constituents, every single one of those people count. That's why they elected us, and if they, we don't speak for them, then who will? That is the whole point of this whole thing. And the day that it becomes that way, where that is not what we're supposed to do, and we're not supposed to uphold what we told people we were gonna do, I will quit this board, and I'm gonna leave it at that. Otherwise, have a wonderful night.
Mrs. Porter.
Yes, I want to say thank you to everyone who showed us appreciation this month. I know there were a lot of hands that participated in that. Also, thank you to Summit Parkway Middle School and Your Honor's Chorus. They said thank you for shining our light on the district, but they definitely shined their light this evening. So thank you to them, and their proud principal, Ms. April Shell, had wonderful comments prepared for you, and something came up. But thank you, Ms. Freeman, for standing in her place. Have a good evening.
All right, Dr. Moore.
Oh.
I just want to make sure everybody had their chance before I share good news. As always, first and foremost, thank you to Summit Park 2. I love seeing the students, and I couldn't wait, so I opened my gift, and it's a little light that if you pull it up, it shines bright. And so, thank you. The students were awesome. Want to also highlight some things, great things that are happening in our district. So the Windsor Magnet Mock Interviews. So this is for the aspiring Magnet Program students because they have to compete in an interview or complete an interview as a part of their entrance requirements. And so to make sure that they were extra prepared, these fifth graders from Windsor Elementary, excuse me, had the opportunity to do a practice interview with school and district leaders. So I want you to listen to how amazing our students are at interviewing, and they're only in the fifth grade.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Waterly. The three words that best describe me are creative, intelligent, and hardworking. I'm here just practicing for my interview for when I want to join the law program.
So my three words that a lot of people call me are kind, beautiful, and proud.
One thing that I learned from this experience is that I could actually be better on raising my voice and being louder like how I am now.
I want to be a pediatrician because I'm, I'm really good with younger kids, and I like helping people.
I learned to definitely keep, keep my, my confidence up so that way I don't fidget, I don't, I just feel proud of myself at the end of the day.
Actually, I started a recess club, which is called Trash Club. It's a club where we pick up trash at recess.
Uh, I think I would be a great asset to this community because I have good leadership, I'm a good team player, and I can communicate right. So if there's a problem, if I don't fix it, we'll probably fix it together.
I'm here today because I'm interviewing for the Magnet Program.
I think that I can fit in the law program because I, uh, my grades are high and I think I'm good at writing.
How many interviews have you done in your life?
Honestly, this might be my first interview.
So very valuable, right?
Yes.
So wasn't that wonderful to see these fifth graders? What do we say? We are purpose-driven and future-ready, and interviewing is a great skill that they will need. Speaking about great skills, we have rookie teacher on the block. So I know you're aware that each month, in partnership with our local H&R Block team, Richland 2 celebrates a rookie teacher on the block. So congratulations to our January rookie teacher of the block, and that is our social studies teacher, Mr. Dehaven Kennedy from Muller Road Middle. Now, he became a Richland 2 teacher thanks to a social media and a very optimistic principle. So let's listen as to how we were able to recruit this exceptional rookie teacher.
You guys, I get to work with all of our community partners. That means businesses that want to help us out and invest in our students. Well, there is one community partner that has just done so much for us. They're called H&R Block. You guys ever heard of them?
Yes.
Good. They're the tax service people, right? Well, they're more than that. They also sponsor a really special award for Richland 2. And that award this morning goes to your wonderful teacher, Mr. Kennedy.
We have different behaviors that we talk about, and that's, that's what connects our people to the brand and the company. And it was really, it was really funny because when I was reading the letter they wrote about you, all the words that are in our behaviors like exude through you. So we talk a lot about connected culture. We talk about being bold and curious. And I loved, so one of the things they talked about was just how you really relate to your students, just the culture you've created around you. You're curious, you connect with your students, your faculty, and everything just to be the best leader you can. But we just wanted to recognize you, and you're Rookie Teacher of the Month.
Thank you. Uh, it's cool, you know. I'm a new teacher, so just to be awarded, you know, this is my first time getting an award, so it's pretty cool. Yeah, getting awards.
Why did you come to Richland 2?
I'm a Richland 2 grad. I went to Blackwood High School. I went to Summit Parkway Middle School. So I live right up the street, so this was perfect to be at Muller Road. My daughter goes to school here. My brother went to Westwood. You know, I love Richland 2.
So this summer, when we came in, it was a priority for us to get all of our vacancies filled before, before our students came back. And so we needed a social studies teacher in sixth grade. And I remember I was scrolling on Twitter one day, and I saw that I had a new friend request, and it was from a gentleman named Dehaven Kennedy. And so in looking at his profile, he was pace-eligible in area of social studies, middle-of-eligible in the area of social studies. So I sent him a DM and asked him, did he secure any placement? He said that he had, and I asked him, would he be willing to come in for an interview that evening? So he had to arrange some transportation for his kids. He came over that same day, and we were able to do an interview that night about 6:30 PM. And I really liked what I had to hear from him. I felt like he had tremendous promise, and then we offered him a job in which he accepted, and so he came to Muller Road. He's been doing a phenomenal job.
What's the best part about being a teacher?
Uh, just being able to see kids all day and like see them start off not knowing things, and then by the end of the year, sometimes... Or not the end of the year, but right now they remember stuff. And we're talking about this, and I could talk about stuff from the beginning of the year, and they still remember it, so that's pretty cool. Know that they pay attention to me, and they're listening.
He coached at Blackwood High School this year as well, so really showcasing that he can do teaching and learn at a high level and coach at a high level and support kids throughout the Richland 2 community. He is a product of Richland 2 as well. His family's from Richland 2. He graduated from Richland 2, and we're just glad to have him here at Muller Road Middle School.
What would you say to other people that might be considering a career change to become a teacher?
Go ahead and do it because we get summers off. You're not gonna get that anywhere else. And you get to, yeah, and you're not gonna get there anywhere else, and you get to impact lives, and they're gonna remember me for everything. Dr. Ross says, uh, he says, some people are called, some people choose, and I didn't choose. I was called to do this, so I'm just doing my calling.
Isn't that awesome? And our principal using multiple ways to find great talent, so we appreciate that. You know, we value our community input because they are the reason that we are here, because they trust us with their children. And so our Helping Hands Coalition meeting is, our coalition is going to be meeting very soon. Let me tell you what this initiative is about. It's our way to gather information and assess ongoing family needs and how the school district can assist. So our second listening session is this Thursday, January 25th, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM at Blackwood High School in the multipurpose room. So parents, students, staff, as you heard Dr. Scott say, let your voice be heard. Please stop by and tell our team how we can help. And I want to thank trustee Washington for being at the first one. This is really important because we do want to hear from the community and from our parents and our students so that we know how to best meet your needs. So please come out and support. And then we had a VEX robotics competition. Now, I don't know if any of you have been to robotics competitions, but I have. They are so much fun. If you ever have a chance, please go. On Saturday, January 21st, teams from Blackwood and Ridge, Ridgeview High School competed against 43 other teams from across the state in the VEX robotics competition. In the skills competition, robots must compete, complete a set of tasks both under driver control and then using pre-programmed code written by students. The Bengalbots scored 205 points, placing them eighth in the tournament and 18th in the state out of 86 teams. The Bengal Super Tanks also went four and two and were ranked 16th out of 43 teams, but lost in the round of 16. Ridgeview High School's team also excelled with one Trailblazers team finishing in the Sweet 16 of the tournament in spot number 15, their highest ranking this season. The top 32 teams in the state qualify for the state championship at the end of February. So the Ridgeview Trailblazers will continue their journey to the state championship on February the 10th at G3, which is Gritty Gator Games Qualifier at River Bluff High School. These competitions truly are amazing, and if you've never seen one, I highly recommend that you go and check it out and cheer them on. Last but not least, I know as you walked through the lobby tonight, you noticed that there was just a plethora of student art, beautiful student art. So these are, this is the district visual arts show. It began on Monday, and it goes through March 22nd. The student artwork will be displayed in the lobby based on the schedule. So elementary group one is January 22nd through February 2nd. Elementary group two is February the 5th through the 20th. Middle school is February 21st through March 6th, and high school is March 7th through 22nd. And we'll put these dates in the board brief so that you will have them. Last but not least, it is Board Appreciation Month, and I just want to say thank you once again to the board for the partnership. And while we recognize that January is that month, we know that our board works 12 months out of the year. And so appreciation is for 12 months, not just for one month. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I just want to say a couple of things. First off, when we were talking about our, we're getting some information on budget, and I just want to announce that I have helped all I can with the budget. I paid my property taxes last week, and oh, it hurt. Anyway, I'm sure most of you can relate to that, but... Secondly, tonight at our, we had a dinner before this meeting, and I was asked by someone what advice I would give to the student leaders there on how to be a good leader. And the first, first thing I thought, and the first thing I said, was to listen. There's a lot of things a leader can do, but I think listening is so crucial because you can't really lead effectively if you, if you don't listen to what other people have to say and, and take their ideas and make them part of your reality. A lot of other things a leader should do, but certainly listening has to be at the top of that list. And that's what I would advise all our students out there. Always remember that, you know, you need to be a good listener. Anybody can be a good talker, but being a good listener is a real tough skill. All right, if I could, let's, I'd like to get a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Washington.
I move that we adjourn the January 23rd, 2024 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Washington, second by Mrs. Nash to adjourn the meeting. Let's just hand vote, everybody. All right, votes unanimous. We are adjourned.